Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, nine session. Commissioner Jones, would you lead us in prayer and the pledge, please?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to be here today, be with us all, Lord, as we discuss and make our best to make good decisions and prudent decisions, Lord, not only for today, but for favor tomorrow you may give us here in Franklin County. And we thank you for the privilege to live here in Jesus and in the
Amen.
Flag to the leaders, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, and in the world, where we preach and preach our own.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Next on the agenda will be approval of the minute.
So moved.
Got a motion filed by Commissioner Mastin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perry, and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimously. Next to be payment of the county bill?
So moved.
Got a motion filed by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Mastin, and a discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimously. Next will be public comment. Public comments.
Commissioners, if you may, let me just clarify a few things. Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, public. I want to clarify on the public comments, because I know there are a number of people here today to comment on the road closing behind the Humane Society that leads to the firing range. I want to be clear, today when you get up, you have a specific time in which you can speak three minutes. That time doesn't allow for engagement with the board. There's no back and forth, there is no motions to be made. The board will probably address this later on in the meeting, as it is on Attorney Schuler's report. So I want to be very clear with the public, yet you speak for your allotted time, which is three minutes, I believe, and then you will, in fact, when you're notified of your three minutes, please end your statement so someone else could speak. Because we want to allow everyone in the room to speak that wants to speak. So I want to be everybody's clear about that. Cover that. A couple of other things I want to clear up, Commissioners, that we need to know. There's been a lot of discuss, I see emails, I've seen, not emails so much, more discussions and posts about the range being closed in 2018. I want to make sure it's very clear to the public that there were subsequent conversations by this board after that, and we reopened the range. Because people think that we're trying to open the range right now for the first time. Also want to be very clear, there's a discussion as to what was first. Basically, the range was there long before the Humane Society was. And I'm not saying this to be for or against anybody, I'm just trying to state some information that there's some confusion out in the public, so that as people come forward and make their statement, there's, you know, they have the understanding of these things were done. All right? And with that, Commissioners, I'll defer back to you, Mr. Chairman, and you can start with public comments, and I will start the timer.
Okay, public comment. Now your time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Cutler Edwards, I'm here with SGI Brew Fest, who are a fundraiser event for the Humane Society, and just wanted to give, and I appreciate that background on previous closures of the gun range and subsequent reopening, as well as the historical precedent of the gun range, sort of predating the Humane Society. But I think one of the things that is important to bring up is that it was relatively recently, six or eight weeks ago, when the Humane Society discovered that what has commonly been referred to as the road through the Humane Society to the gun range is actually just a driveway, and it runs through property that belongs to the Humane Society. It's not actually a roadway, you know, it's a driveway. That's wholly owned by the Humane Society. Details of that aside, I think it's important for you to know that within the next 12 to 24 months, the Humane Society will be constructing additional buildings on its property, buildings that have already been donated and will be installed, and they're going to obscure that driveway. So, and within two years, that's not going to be a publicly available means of, you know, ingress to the gun range, regardless of the outcome of today's, you know, conversation. And the fact that there is, although inconvenient, other public access to the gun range, I think is worth bearing in mind, too. Just because the shortest path is through the Humane Society doesn't mean that it is the only one people can use to get there. But those details aside, I think it's worth also going back and thinking a little bit about the public safety question. I mean, it's an unsupervised gun range, which is a sort of come one, come all, right? And much the same way that popular places to shoot out in the woods are, it's frequently, you can find liquor bottles there, I mean, ultimately, anybody can show up and shoot whenever they want, whatever they want, right? Most importantly, it's literally within gunshot of not only the Humane Society, which has found bullets outside the building, but the jail and the yard where inmates are, as well as the landfill, where I know Mr. Davis has had some concerns about the safety of employees at the landfill. And so you have a gun range surrounded by three public facilities that Franklin County citizens should feel safe traveling to and utilizing with a sort of unregulated Wild West of a gun range. And at this point, we have not only an Appalachia Cola gun range that people could use, but the sheriff has also expressed that he would be willing to entertain opening, the sheriff's range to public use at certain times. It will, of course, come with some supervision of the people who will be there shooting, but I don't think that any of us really want to argue against the wisdom of having some supervision of people, you know, shooting guns off on public land, right? So, the legality side, the public safety side, and I think a little bit of a public health issue is worth thinking about, not just the role that the Humane Society plays in keeping strays off the streets and sort of absolving us all of the psychological burden of the county executing hundreds of animals a year because we don't care for them and don't have the facilities without the Humane Society's help to do that. But, you know, we're also in a place where water is really important, and an awful lot of lead gets left in the ground at a firing range, and it's a small detail, but something worth thinking about, too. That groundwater is right there. So, the driveway is going away, I think we should have safe public facilities, and I don't need extra lead in the groundwater. So, thanks for your time today. Obviously, we have a lot of impassioned people here today, I think we're going to
How about addressing the commission when you're talking?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Just to gesture to include the other people here, not to disregard, you are asking for feedback, my apologies. And we hope that we all have a nice civil, thoughtful, considerate conversation about this, which I know is an important issue to many people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next public, next public comment.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I was here at the last meeting to bring up an issue regarding the Civil Air Patrol opportunities at the airport.
Let me get your
My name is Bruce Graham from East Point, and I just wanted to, I said I'd keep you informed. We had a good visit from Civil Air Patrol Colonel Duron, came by the airport, and went to the high school, addressed the middle school and the high school units, as well as the teachers. And we got a lot of interest and consideration, it brings some good opportunities. They currently have units in Pensacola, Milton, Eglin, Tyndall, which has had to move to Panama City, as well as Marianna and Tallahassee. They think it's a strategic location to have a unit here, both for operational purposes, search and rescue, surveillance, firefighting surveillance, as well as an opportunity, more importantly, for the, our children. They want to focus on the middle school to start bringing them up through the high school, and then also offer an opportunity for the high school students. They brought up an issue regarding STEM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics opportunity, which is funded by CAP and is provided to the teachers. The teachers receive some training, and some of these kits that they provide have a value of up to $8,000. It includes rocketry, aviation, drones, issues like that. So it'd be a good opportunity for the children to look for something outside to be able to expand their help. It also provides them opportunities with advancement into the, if they decide to enlist in the Air Force, it gives them a leg up. So I think it, we'll keep going with that. I passed out some brochures, I think you all have them, and I have any extras if we want to leave some for members in the audience. The last item to bring up regards a possible pancake fly-in breakfast to support the Appalachia Cola Seafood Festival. It would happen at the airport, we're trying to get local aviation enthusiasts to fly in, come to the airport, participate in the breakfast, then come down to the festival. So we'll be working on that as well, and keep you all informed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Karen Martin, and I'm the Director of the Franklin County Humane Society.
Good morning.
I would like to begin by telling you all about who we are and what we do, because I do think there is some confusion in the community regarding that. We are a not-for-profit 501(c)(3), and the only, the one and only rescue in this county. As such, we are the only place for stray, abandoned, and owner surrenders to go if they hope to live. We work very closely with the county's animal control and have a very, very good rapport. We take hundreds of animals from animal control, as well as the public at large. Animal Control has a five-day stray hold policy. They have, they have to take in any animal that they pick up or is brought to them. Their facility cannot house all the many, many animals that come in. So if we aren't there to take those animals, they are euthanized as early as five days. So that is what our role is. Animal Control doesn't have an adoption program, so all the animals come to them, would be euthanized after five days. Animal Control transfers their adoptable animals to us, which they want to be able to do. I don't envy them their jobs. These men are good men who want to save the animals that come into their facility, so they come to us. In addition to routine transfers, the Humane Society steps up to work in conjunction with animal control when they can't handle the capacity that they're dealing with. Case in point, a few years ago, in the town of Carabel, there was a hoarding case, where 57 cats and 20 dogs were seized and brought out of. They were in horrible condition, having lived in filthy circumstances. The Humane Society chose to take on that, I don't want to say burden, probably an honor, to help these animals. We vetted them, we treated them for their diseases, we took care of them, and we were able to rehome the vast majority of them. Their fate would have been very, very different if the Humane Society wasn't in existence. We don't warehouse animals. Every one of the animals that comes to us via animal control, owner surrender, or the drop pen is fully vetted. They are vaccinated, tested, defleed, dewormed, spayed, and neutered before adoption. The average vetting of a puppy, and this is a healthy puppy, has cost the Humane Society approximately $250. Our adoption fee is $150. Our adult, our adult dogs that come in probably average us $300. We adopt them for $100 to $225. And our cats typically range about $200 per cat, $75 adoption fee. The county's monies that we receive is critical to our ongoing mission. We have a voucher program, which allows the neediest in our community to come to the shelter, get a voucher that will allow them to spay and neuter their pet for only $25. These people do not have the resources to care for the animals the way they would like, and if we weren't there offering these vouchers, these animals would be out having more, having more babies. And we make that possible. The Humane Society consistently maintains a no-kill status. We have achieved a 93 to 97 live release rate for many, many years. 90% live release is considered no-kill. We do, we do that by working every single day to find homes for our animals via direct adoption or transfer to other facilities in a more densely populated area. I have been the Director of the Humane Society for almost 10 years now, and I can speak to the effects of the gun range on our animals during that time, and I can tell you, it is heartbreaking. A large percentage of our, of our dogs are afraid of loud noises, such as thunder, fireworks, and gunfire. If a dog is afraid of those kinds of sounds, the first thing they want to do is get as far away as possible. They want to climb out, they want to hide, they will dig until their paws bleed, and they will grab that fence and tear up their mouth trying to get away. It is a level of stress that animals who are stressed by the, already by being in the shelter, should not have to endure. In addition, the concern for our volunteers and the safety of our staff is utmost. They walk those grounds within a few hundred feet of the gun range, and our volunteers don't want to be that close to a lethal weapon, and I can't blame them.
Your time up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, and I have to apologize, before you call for the next one, I know some people are sitting saying that was the longest three minutes ever. With Cutler, Karen, if you represent a fraction of some, a group entity, you have five minutes, and I failed to say that in the beginning, so I just want to clarify the record. Yeah, yeah, Cutler, you, you have 30 seconds more.
I said, I said my few things. I just forgot to sign in. Yeah, yeah.
And I would also ask that you sign pretty clearly your name, so that the clerk could record, you know, your name with your comments correctly in a minute, because I know that's important to a lot of people, and it should be. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
We all forgot to sign in.
Good to you.
I'm Bonnie Stewart.
Nick, go ahead, ma'am.
Bonnie Stewart from Appalachia Cola, and I moved here three years ago after being Director of a Humane Society in Georgia, and I am thrilled at the work that our local Humane Society does. I started out by going out there to volunteer quite a bit, but felt unsafe because of the gun range. And I don't have much more to say, I think our Franklin County Humane Society does a terrific job, and I think it is incumbent upon the population of Franklin County to do something so that those dogs are not freaked out of their minds by guns being fired. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I've sent you all emails, but I just thought I'd follow up with an email, so you
Let me get your name for the record, so.
I was just going to say that in a second. My name's Doug Jimmerson, I'm from East Point, been here six, going on seven years. Full disclosure, I'm also on the Board of Directors of the Humane Society, and I'm very proud of that. I also volunteer, I'm the unofficial dog trainer out there, more the word than the unofficial, but most of the animals that come in are totally untrained, so I work with them every day to get them more adoptable, work, work, sit, stay, all those common commands. There's two things here that I want to talk about. One is, first of all, I think that the removal of the, any funding for the Humane Society is wrong-headed. What's going on out there is pretty miraculous. This Humane Society is actually getting a national reputation for what's being done out there. I mean, I see miracles there every day, it's a true gem. I was there just yesterday, and in the course of several hours, there was a crying couple brought two puppies in. There was some folks that adopted a dog that had been in there since July, was found in Appalachia, all torn up. There was a gentleman coming in for cat spay vouchers. This goes on and on and on, every day. So, I think first of all, the funding should be renewed, and I don't really know the specifics of that, but to take money away from what is a gem of this, of this town, this county, is kind of short-sighted. Now, to the gun range, I work back there every day, probably more than anybody, I see what's going on back there. I've got no problem with guns. However, that unmanned, unregulated gun range is dangerous. I find liquor bottles, I find, someone's cleaned it up this week, by the way, so if you go out there today, it's going to look nice. But there's cases of beer cans, liquor bottles, stolen real estate signs shot up, there's still TVs out there, the ground is solid brass, you can barely walk, it's like walking on marbles. So, there's also no, excuse me, no facilities, no bathroom facilities whatsoever. So it's kind of the Wild West out there, they're not just sighting their guns to be hunting, they're shooting everything from cannons to pistols. So, that in itself is an issue, whether the Humane Society exists or not, you have a situation out there. I see it every day, day after day. So, that's really all I had to say. So I hope you consider and understand, and if you haven't been out there and seen what Karen and the staff do, you're missing something. It's pretty amazing. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I'm Ray Tyre from Carabel, I'm a longtime Franklin County resident, former Carabel City Commissioner. And I speak for a great many folks that are out working for a living today, they can't be here. And just want to, want to go through some history here. We the people gave the Humane Society the property they occupy in 1988, years after the Franklin County Gun Range was built and established. We don't have the early records from, from '88 to '96, but from 1996 to present, we the people, the taxpayers of this county, have given them $904,236. That doesn't take into account the value of the land, or what happened before 1996. $904,236 of our tax dollars. And now they would prohibit we the people from using an established road that we've used from the beginning. As I, as I look at the situation, there is one scenario that comes to mind, and that's of a dog viciously attacking the hand that feeds him. Think about that. $904,000, I'm sure over a million dollars through the years, plus the value of the At the very least, I see it as extremely ungrateful and disrespectful to the taxpayers of this county to block us from another piece of land that belongs to us as well. And I hear about the gunfire and how it bothers the animals. Well, the range was in effect long before the Humane Society, before we gave them the property. So why, at that time, when we gave them that property, didn't they say, no, this is not suitable, because you've got a gun range there? And another point I'd like to make is that the Sheriff's Department firing range is also adjacent to this property. So, does the Sheriff's Department gunfire not affect the animals, but public citizens? It does? Just a question. And I think, in the end, this is more about another agenda than the animals at all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carolina Lardy, and I live in East Point. Um, let me just say, this is not my best thing. 10 years ago, my husband and I started, we worked with the city of Appalachia Cola to start the Appalachia Cola Dog Park. It's a city-owned park, and the city has liability for the park, and they do basic maintenance there. And I wanted to ask you to look at the, the Humane Society gun range issue from a little different perspective. The Mardi Gras crew for 10 years has raised money for the animal shelter, but we also support the dog park. And when we, when we first set the park up, we understood that the city didn't have enough money to do everything over there that we wanted to do. And so, sat down to talk with, with the mayor, and he said, you know, my philosophy is, is that the best way to handle this is to have this be a, a user-sponsored park, and have the people that use the park do the things that the city can't afford to do there. And so for 10 years, we've done that. In addition to raising money for the, for the animal shelter, we've raised money to do things at the, at the dog park that wouldn't normally be able to be done there. We have, we have work parties that go out and clean up, we did the signage, we, we did benches, we've done, we've got a, a construction crew out there right now that's doing something with some benches and some maintenance with the gates. And we do that because we value that property as dog owners. And my, my, my point here is that I think it goes without saying that the, the Humane Society is a, it's a jewel of this county, and I'm sure you know that, you understand what they do and how well they do that. But my point is that if that gun range, wherever it happens to be, is so important to the people that use it, let them do the same thing. Let them, let them clean it up, let them pay for things that the county can't afford to do. I'm a taxpayer, too.
30 seconds.
And I could say, I could say to the city of Appalachia Cola, well, you know, you need to maintain that park, it's important, we use it, it's valuable to the city, but it's important enough as a, as a taxpayer for me to say, I'll do my part. If I use it, let me have some responsibility for it. And I'd like to see you think about having the people that need a gun range do the same thing.
Good morning. My name's Karen Weir Jimmerson. I'm a magazine and a book writer, I, and I live in East Point. I write about gardens and pets and travel for national magazines such as Better Homes and Gardens and Magnolia Journal. I came to Franklin County about six years ago on a press trip, and I'm embarrassed to say, I didn't even know how to pronounce Appalachia Cola, and I came anyway. I do know now how to pronounce Appalachia Cola. But I came here because I read it was pet-friendly, and I came here because I thought, I can write something about that. I'm a freelancer, I'm always looking for an angle. So, I came to Franklin County, and I was so impressed with Franklin County, it's so beautiful, and it's such an amazing community. I was from a small town in Iowa, about the same size as East Point, and let me tell you, this community has so much going on. It's such an amazing place, you know that, I'm not telling you anything. So, I started coming down here on vacation. The first vacation I came down on was with my husband and my two Jack Russells, Archer and Pez. We stayed on the island, we stayed for a week, we, every cent that we spent was in Franklin County for that week, and we did it because we could bring our dogs. I'm not alone, you know this, this is a huge pet-friendly place. One of the things that I, I'm not sure that's really obvious is that an animal shelter is like the beating heart of a community for pet lovers. If there's a responsible Humane Society here, there are people that can come here, they can, they can volunteer when they're on vacation, they can adopt pets. We, we have had three people come and visit us, and my husband took them over to the shelter, and they left with pets, they flew home with them. You know, this is a cool thing, and this, this whole community is supported by this Humane Society. So, to find out that you rescinded the funds for it, for whatever reason, is super sad, but it's also kind of short-sighted, because there are so many people here who are so interested in animal welfare. A big part of the tax-paying and money-spending, you know, people that come here are pet lovers.
30 seconds.
So, what I would urge you to do is to, you know, go ahead and refund the Humane Society, and actually maybe give them more, because you know what, they do a ton of stuff here. And I, I'm not the, the person to address everything that they do. And I'm not the person to address everything that they do here. I'm the person to address the fact that I want to write about pet-friendly places. And I want to write about Appalachia and East Point and all of Franklin County. So, please help me do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Joelle M. Pierman. I live on St. George Island. I came in a little late, which people know me. And I don't know if this was brought up, but it seems a year ago it was discussed moving the gun range because Fonda Davis said it was dangerous for his employees out there. And I was just curious if that went by the wayside? And if it did, why? Isn't that still an option? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Pfeifer, speaking for myself. I just can't keep my nose out of things. I'm going to be really brief. Good people on both sides. I'm a gun owner. I'm a pet owner. Fonda does, you know, y'all do a great job on animal control. This is a problem. It needs to be solved. We're arguing about good people. I suggest we set up a small committee. Somebody from the gun range, somebody from animal control, somebody from the Humane Society, maybe somebody, maybe a commissioner. And they come up, bring some suggestions on how to resolve this for, this is a long-term problem that's been brewing for a long time. But there needs to be a solution because, you know, these are all, the gun range, we need a gun range. I wish we had one on my side of the county. This needs a solution. It's not going to be solved here today. But these people do wonderful work, the Humane Society. Please, let's find a solution. It's not going to be had today here at this meeting. Let's set up a group, a working group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Hall. I'm from Appalachia. And I'd like to speak to the shooting range and the Humane Society as separate topics. Fonda Davis had brought up problems with the range being a danger to the employees, to the prisoners, or something over at the Sheriff's Department. Issues were brought up with the cleanliness of it and how it's kept up. So, it's obviously an issue. And I had thought, at that time, y'all were taking a vote to close it, move it, make some change to it. I don't have any kind of hidden agenda. I'm a gun owner. I have used the range. So, you know, it's been an issue for a while, and it needs to be handled. You know, if it's a problem where it is, then let's find another place for it. As far as the Humane Society, they're a big asset to this community. We're very lucky to have the skill management and care that's given there. They're an asset, and they need to be supported. They have animals to feed every day. And to stop any kind of funding for that facility is unconscionable. I hope you'll reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
My name is Patrick Bailey. I'm a resident Franklin County for over 20 years. I retired from the military. I moved here because it was pet-friendly. I'm an animal advocate. I'm not here for or against guns in this particular meeting. But I've seen the effect that the Humane Society has had within our community. We have annual parade for Mardi Gras for the dogs. The dogs contribute a great deal indirectly to the financial benefit of this county, this city. It attracts people to our community. This community has grown extensively financially in the last 20 years, and I think for a lot of reasons. And I think one of those reasons specifically has more to do with the Humane Society than it has to do with guns. I don't think we want to go on record as the city of Appalachia that ruled for guns versus dogs. Because if it goes to national sentiment and national exposure, I have a feeling it's not going to reflect well on our community as far as what we're able to accomplish in the future if we alienate animals and go totally pro-guns. I think we need to leave the Humane Society alone as it is. And the guns can move off to a different location where it's not causing conflict. I don't think the animals are causing conflict. Just leave the animals alone. Just move the guns someplace else.
Sir, it is the county, not the city.
I really don't have anything else to say other than it's upsetting to me that we would even consider doing something against the dogs or the animals. Especially since we are so invested in the environment and the estuary and what the ecology and what the animals mean to humanity.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I really had no intention of speaking today.
Let me get your name for the record, please, ma'am.
Thank you. The first thing I would like to say...
Let me get your name for the record, please, ma'am.
Yes. Jean Reeks.
Thank you.
My husband and I moved to Carabel in 1989. We love this area. We moved away, and I moved back after he died because I love it here. People here are good, with good intention. I can't help but think, when I see the animal lovers, that we ought to think about Ben Watkins and how much he loved the area and loved his animals. And he proved it in many ways. We need to carry on a little bit for Ben Watkins. He and I did not get along. But I loved him for his love. We have a county that's huge in so many ways. We have lots of land. And to be arguing and discussing over little, small pieces and areas is foolish. I think our animals are very lucky to have such wonderful advocates. I was totally impressed with each speaker today. Give it thought. And this may not be politically correct, but give it prayer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mr. Whitpoles. I think, just want to make one thing clear. We think the Humane Society has done a great job. It's not, you know, it's not about the job they've done. It's been a very exceptional job. And, of course, I'm a dog owner, cat owner, and have about 30 chickens and a turkey. I love animals. But the issue is that, you know, that firing range has been there forever. And as Mr. Tyre said earlier, it was there before the Humane Society. And it's just not like there's plenty of land for us to, you know, to build another one. And, but, you know, I would suggest, if we decide to do that, go that direction, that, you know, the Humane Society could participate in instruction of that, you know, if we decide to do that. Maybe make a donation toward a new firing range and help us out. Because at the point, this point, we have, the county's built three ranges, firing ranges. And if we close this one, then we're still without a firing range. And the way the laws are now, if we decide to go into the woods, like we used to years ago, before the firing range, and target our rifles and shoot our pistols, whatever, now you get a ticket. It could possibly take your guns. But, you know, I think we can work together and figure this out. But at the same time, I don't think we need to just close it abruptly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Excuse me, Commissioner.
Gentlemen.
Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Brenda Colonna. I'm from St. George Island. And I had no intention of speaking either until I sat here and listened. I understand there's a big problem. I'm listening to both sides. I understand it's something that needs to be worked on. What I don't understand is why the funding is being considered to be stopped in the interim until a permanent solution is set up. We obviously have something here that's important to everyone in the community, the Humane Society. And talk about withholding funds is what I, as a taxpayer, don't understand. And that's really all I have to say. But I hope you, well, I hope you'll really reconsider reinstating those funds and then working towards, whether it's the group to make, a committee or something, working towards a permanent solution that will satisfy everyone. There are enough people that can work together to find a solution that would work for everyone, I think. I don't think it has to be an either-or. There are enough people here that care enough about things that I think we can work it out together. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I just wanted to say I don't want my silence...
Let me get you...
I'm sorry. My name is Bud Hayes. I'm president of the Humane Society. I have sat here and listened to everybody. I don't want you to think my silence is not because I don't care. I intend to be heard when Mr. Schuler presents his report.
Now is your time to speak, Mr. Hayes.
No, sir. When we talk about the compromise, I think I will have the opportunity to speak.
Now is the time under public comment.
Mr. Schuler and I have worked on a proposed interim agreement that he will be bringing before you. It is a very temporary settlement until we get a total resolution of this. And I just want to know that my, obviously, my sentiments with the Humane Society. I am a member of the NRA. I'm a gunsman. I like to shoot my gun, but I do not like to stir up the animals. And we can move that range by moving two picnic tables and a trash can to another site, the sheriff's site. That's pretty much all it is. And it's really not a shooting range, per se, if you ever read a definition of a shooting range. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. What's that? You got to still be next.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Buehl. I represent SGI Cat Allies Incorporated. We're a 501(c)(3) totally volunteer organization that has managed, without $1 of cost to the county or the city, to trap, neuter, vaccinate, in return, 977 cats in Franklin County over the last four years. This was accomplished through volunteerism. The Humane Society does wonderful things because of volunteerism. We couldn't do what we do without the Humane Society's collaboration. I know that Karen and her staff have our backs. We're going to have a big TNR event in November. And I can count on Karen and her staff for expertise, information, on how to humanely do our operation. That said, I grew up in Nebraska. I know how to handle a gun. So, I respect the gun owner's position here. My point is volunteerism seems to be the key here, that the gun owners, the shooters, could rally and become as passionate about what their sport is to the point that it wouldn't cost anybody anything if they would get together, support their own cause, and do it one volunteer at a time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, before you make the last round and when Bud spoke, that kind of talked to attorney about that, I want to make it very clear. This is your only opportunity to speak on the issue. When it comes up, Attorney Schuler on his report, if the board decides to have a conversation amongst themselves, that's between the board and Attorney Schuler. The public will not have an opportunity at that time to speak.
What if we have questions? Then he can answer.
Then you, what you would do, Commissioners, forward the questions to myself or Attorney Schuler, and we then will engage as staff. We will engage whoever you want us to engage. But before the chairman closes out public comment, I want everyone that wants to speak to speak. I want to be very clear. This is your only opportunity.
Right. And just so you know, the only issue that I am presenting to the board under my report is for them to consider Bud's proposal, which is to, for the county, to close the gun range and monitor the road, not the driveway, Mr. Hayes, the road, from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. daily. That is the offer and settlement that has been offered by the Humane Society to the board. And I'm required to bring, under the rules of professional responsibility, to the board any settlement offer that I receive on their behalf. So, they will be deciding whether or not to accept that compromise that has been offered. They may or may not make a decision at today's meeting. They may just receive the report, take it under advisement. I don't know what the board's going to do. But if there's anyone in the public that wants to, I guess, give their opinion to the board concerning that settlement proposal specifically, this is your opportunity under public comment to do so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Public comment.
Bud Hayes, again, I just have just one quick addendum to my previous comment. Sometimes Mr. Schuler's horsemanship and mine do not agree.
I'm shocked. Two lawyers with different opinions.
Here's a third lawyer.
Hey, good.
My name is Jeff Ullardy. I live in East Point. Lived there for about 15 years. We do the Mardi Gras parade to raise money for the, we're a nonprofit organization. We do a parade every year. Brings a lot of people to town, people who love dogs. And the shelter is our main beneficiary. Karen comes and brings dogs to every one of our parades. A lot of dogs get adopted. Okay. What I'm asking the Commissioners to do is restore the funding to the shelter. There is no reason now to withhold that funding. It's, you probably wanted to use it as leverage. And I understand leverage. I know what that's all about. But at this point, you see the voters, the taxpayers... But at this point, you see the voters, the taxpayers of Franklin County overwhelmingly in favor of restoring the funding to the Humane, I think it's thirty-six some odd thousand dollars. They need it. The animals need it. The people of Franklin County need it. And they want it. And I ask all the Commissioners to consider that when you're moving to either restore or not restore this funding. It's essential. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Mary Johnson. I live in East Point. I've been here for about a year. And I have heard only wonderful things about our Humane Society here. It performs an essential public function. Imagine if it wasn't here. Would we be accepting a five-day limit before you euthanized animals? I think not. Not at all. And I think they do a wonderful job. We're very fortunate to have them. And I hope you'll restore their funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda. Department directive report.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Good morning.
We still continue throughout the county, cutting grass and ditches and grading roads and cutting right-of-way shoulders back. We in East Point now, then we're going to move from East Point to Applejack, and then we'll start back over. The other comment that I got is, which I've talked to Michael on the, I got a couple employees from the landfill wanting to transfer to the road department, which I've talked to Michael, which that starting salary is twenty-five thousand. So some of them make a lot more than twenty-five thousand. They want to take their money with them. You know, I said they couldn't take their money with them. I talked to Michael and he said that was correct. And I just wanted to make sure we all on the same page.
You is it? What they can do is, um, we made a decision here.
Been a couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago that if you transfer, you can't, if you've got a long time salary, a high salary than what the starting.
Which is, yeah, yes, sir. It's twenty-five thousand starting. I think it's a lot more than that, some of them.
We like, well, we were, to save money, we want to bring them in on entry level.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman. So when do we start doing that, Michael? Just for understanding sake? Two years, five years, ten years, twenty years? So in the last three years?
I think it's a little longer than that.
So how did we do it before then? Would you, we just do budget, budget transfers kind of deal?
Yeah, everything's case-by-case basis.
So we didn't really have a formal policy on it.
Right. But the times we did do it, if you're starting twenty-five at one place and say the employee's making forty at the other one, couldn't you do it, did you do budget addendums? Is that what you did? Took the money out of one budget and gave it to the other budget?
Yeah, it has been longer than that.
I'd like to know the background.
I just, making sure we're still on the same page with our, sure have members. That's all I got, Commissioner.
Anybody, you got something else from Mr. Howard?
Don't go nowhere, Howard. Michael, before you get started, Howard, before I forget, I do have some stuff on the top to you about later. Some different things.
All right, Commissioners, if you go to item number one of my report. I met with the superintendent of schools and her staff on Friday to discuss if the county would be willing to provide in-kind man-hours and use of county equipment to assist with clearing an escape route from the consolidated school to the school board's property located next to the sheriff's office. You can see my little map I have there up on the thing. The superintendent would like approximately one point three miles escape route to be at least forty feet wide. Mr. Neighbors, your road superintendent, Mr. Davis, your solid waste director, met with school district staff and forestry representatives prior to my meeting to discuss what services the county could offer. I was told that forestry would attempt to change the route so there are less curves. And they're also willing to provide some of their equipment to assist with cleaning the route. After hearing from Mr. Neighbors and Mr. Davis on what assistance the county could provide this morning, I would like some direction from the board. There is a possibility that this project could start, or they would like to start this project before your next regular meeting. So if the board willing to authorize the department to assist with this project, and I would let Mr. Howard and Mr. Davis explain to, because I was not party to their meetings. So I would let them explain to you what they discussed. And then I think Pam is hitting me with a piece of paper she wants to talk to you.
Yeah, we met with them about the road, and I think they're going to furnish all the material. They supposed to have some kind of budget, correct? With that right there. And, you know, we could help from time to time, not every day, but from time to time, we can help them.
You know, we always do work with cities, counties, the kind of work with cities, the school board.
Yes, sir.
And everything. But we need some from them.
Yes, sir.
Don't we? We need, we need some kind of writing or letting us know what it, before we get obligated.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Morrell made me aware of this issue. I guess it was via email late last week, maybe Thursday or Friday morning. I forget what it was. But I responded to him Monday morning, because when I read through the chain of emails and the exchange of information, what I saw as a, what in my perception was a critical component that is missing at this moment is we haven't gotten anything officially in writing from the school board, essentially requesting officially anything for the county to do. They haven't laid out really a scope of work or what's expected of the county or what it's going to cost, or what their expectations are in terms of when to start, when to complete, standard of construction. There's been really no discussion about who's going to be held, holding the county harmless in terms of what happens if our people get hurt working on their project? What if some of this loaned out equipment from the forestry is damaged? I mean, there are a lot of unanswered questions in my mind at this point. And primarily, I think that the first stepping stone would be to get an official request from the school board stating what they expect of the county commission. And then we will have to develop a plan from there. Frankly, would expect them to develop a plan and present it to you for your consideration. They need to do the cost estimates and things of that nature. That was my fault. I emailed Mr. Morrell and told him that I thought we needed to have these items as an official request in writing from the school board for you to consider.
Well, I'm going to ask the pledge of vote, but in my opinion, we got to, it's in my opinion, we need to get, the county, we willing to help. We want them, we know that we willing to help. But we just need a, we need some, a little more information and rights.
They give a easement, which is going to be a county road. The state give the road to the county, which has took, what, three or four years for them to get that? So we have a sixty-foot right-of-way easement through there that they're going to give the county, the state is.
That, well, that make a difference.
I got seven more information.
We need some of that.
How, I was understanding that the school board was supposed to get a hundred thousand dollars, bid this project out and let somebody else build the road. Is that?
If the board may, I think Pam also has information that they have applied for LMS funding and how this project would affect.
And another issue, real quick, Mike, before Pam speaks, we don't have a bulldozer or anything. What are you going to do with all these trees when you push them up? What are you going to do with all that stuff? And then somebody wanted, understood somebody wanted ditches by the road? Or somebody didn't want ditches so the water drains off the road? I mean, where's all this going to, and the loaning? You saying that the state's going to loan equipment? Why don't the state run their own equipment? I don't want to be liable for the state's equipment. If something tears up, then the county's responsible for fixing all this equipment?
The state's going to have their own man on it.
Okay, they're going to have their own people on their own equipment.
We and Fonda and I will have our own equipment when we work on it, with our guys on it.
What equipment are you talking about taking out?
We have excavator. We got an excavator and front end loader.
Yeah, I mean, a front end loader's not made to build roads. A bulldozer would be more appropriate.
You can load a lot of stuff. You take your excavator and you can pinch that stuff up and, you know, you just put it piled for now. And later on, go through and load it up. Which they probably, I'll say three quarters of a mile, maybe a little farther than it's bad. The rest of it, you can cut and just go in and put pipes in.
And who's going to pay for all this stuff?
I guess the school.
Well, ain't no guessing. We got to know what we doing. Ain't no guessing who's going to do it.
It ain't the road department.
That's the thing, Commissioner, what the school was asking is that needing help, what you're talking about, the funding that they do have, it's going to take that in road base. So they're wanting to, you help us to help forestry and the solid waste road department to help cut and clear some of the tree. So the little bit of money they do have is going to be used to, yeah, for the material.
And what about the pipes you're talking about going under the road and all that?
That kind of stuff is.
I mean, we got to know what we doing. I don't think like this board should obligate anything. Do we know what we doing?
Right.
Who's doing what? Who's going to do what? He's trying to keep the grass cut, and you trying to keep the garbage up. When are we going to be able to go out there and do all this stuff?
That's understood with the maintenance directors. They are, we only can help when, you know, when the time allow. We won't be out there every day. And the same thing with forestry, only when time allows to be there.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to defer to our county attorney. He has obviously given us insight that this is a multi-departmental, both state and county issue. It's multi-operational. And I believe we do need a roadmap and a scope of work to answer many of the questions that we have here. So could our county attorney go ahead and approach the parties that are interested and bring us back something that just coagulates everything together? Just some direction.
If that's the will of the board, I'm more than happy to do that.
Now, I'd like to make that in the form of a motion. So this was complimentary. Go ahead.
For example, I don't know, has this road been engineered? Who's responsible for the permitting cost? I mean, we can't just throw a piece of equipment out there and start building a road out through the middle of the national forest. And I did not understand that the state given a road to the county. I don't remember the county asking for a road. So I'm not sure how that happened. I mean, I don't know if that's an accurate statement or not in terms of who the state is giving the easement to. But if they've given us a road and we choose voluntarily to build it, then of course, we've got to maintain it. And that will be an ongoing cost for the county. So all these things, these issues need to be looked at. But the first thing we need to receive, I think, is a written request from the school board outlining the scope, you know, delivering any engineering plans that they prepared, proposing, you know, providing us with a copy of the permit to construct the road. And there may be other questions that need to be answered. But I'll be more than happy to look into this as the board directs.
Well, I've got a question too. If they gave us the county a road, why did the school board involve?
Like I said, I don't know if what I heard here this morning was an accurate statement. I remember one of the attachments that I saw in the email chain was a deed from the board of trustees. I did not pretend to read the deed word for word. I knew it was a, supposed to be an easement based on the content of the email. But I frankly don't recall looking at the grantee. I had just presumed, since the school board was handling it, that this was a deed from the board of trustees to the school board. And I'm hearing something maybe a little bit differently, and maybe my presumption is incorrect. But the document will speak for itself. I can pull it up and look at it. And I may be able to do it on my phone at some point this morning. But I don't know that that's necessarily a question we need to answer today. That would just be one of the questions that have to be answered going forward.
Well, like I said, you know, we always work with them, but we, we ain't got enough detail to really, right?
Yeah, and they asked if we could help, you know, Mr. Robert and Clint Davis, which, you know, he was with us. He showed us the easement that they was going to give the county, which is for the school, for escape route for the school in case a bad storm, roads washed out, no way that they could get back for the school. But I agree with what, it needs to be surveyed, definitely. But it's just brought up to see if we get started on it or just how the board wanted to handle it.
Well, we got, we got to know what we dealing with. Right about long enough, we, I ain't got no problem with it. I don't understand what we doing. Pam, you had something to say about this? You know something about this?
My understanding, Commissioners, were that the school board is going to apply for LMS funding for this road, which means all of that has to be done. That application goes to the state. The state runs the cost-benefit analysis on it. And then, again, it's competitive against all our other projects. And yes, there is a match, and the school board would be responsible for that match to help them fund this road. Now, with that being said, if you're going to apply for LMS funding, you cannot put the first piece of equipment on that property until your LMS is approved, your LMS application's approved.
How long will that take?
It's a lot, right now, it's just open. Carl called me and I sent him the application, and then someone on the school board contacted us. And we'll send, again, the application. I don't know who's filling it out, but it'll take a while.
I guess my question would be, what they trying to do this without that?
I don't, this is the first I've heard of this. Again, I'm not sure that the school board understands the LMS process. You can't start your project before you are actually approved. Otherwise, everything you did before is not reimbursable. I mean, that's just like anything the county does. I mean, I come before y'all and tell you where we're going to get the match, what projects that we're submitting, and then it's up to the state to say, yes, this is, this is cost beneficial. We're going to fund this project. But we cannot put the first shovel in the ground, to speak, until the state says, yes, we're going to fund this project.
Well, I'm confused because if it's, I guess I'm confused because why the school doing this? And they saying it's a, the state gave to the county?
Mr. Chairman, I was just reading this very small print on my phone. And the access easement was conveyed by the board of trustees to the school board back in April or May of this year. The copy that I show here in the attachment to this email clearly shows the school board as the grantee of the access easement. And I don't see any recording data. So as of the time that this copy was put into the email chain that I received last week, this dated September twenty-sixth, it had not even been recorded. So.
And so it was given to the school board, not the county?
That is correct, yeah.
And another, Mr. Chairman, another issue, Michael, when you researching, trying to find, get us more information on it, who's going to be responsible for the maintenance of the school board's road?
It's their access easement.
Well, I'm just saying, you don't need periodic maintenance when it's washed out. Another thing, is it, is it a flat road down on the ground or is it an elevated road to mitigate the? Some of this is pretty flat in there, right, if I'm not mistaken, as far as being washed out and stuff I'm saying? Is it going to be built to a standard where it can be easily maintained? Or is it just going to be half underwater, half the town? I mean, I don't know. But this is the kind of stuff we have to know.
Sure.
And who's going to be responsible for the regular maintenance of it if it needs more stuff on it? I mean, I don't want to delete the county budgets in these two departments to maintain a road that don't belong to Franklin County. I mean, there needs to be some kind of understanding of what we doing. I'm like the chairman, we don't know what we doing here. And they're talking about starting before you have a chance and bring it back to the board at the next meeting. Michael's report says they might start next week.
Who's going to start? The school board?
That's what they wanted. And not to interrupt you, sir, but.
That's too quick. We can't do anything that fast.
There are a couple of things going on here, and I probably won't even clarify anything and probably make it worse. They, at the meeting, it was never brought to me that there was LMS funding. They said they had money saved, I'm speaking based on what the superintendent told me. They had money saved that would help with the road. And I think they were saving that for the base, the road base, or whatever. So they never discussed an LMS project with me. Their urgency is because they're trying to get this done as quickly as possible since, you know, we all know what the anniversary's coming up and how ninety-eight was washed out. And they, you know, they would like to use the school for other things besides schools to have access to it, you know? And they, you know, they would like to use the school for other things besides schools to have access to it, you know? To have, to be able to use the school for other things in case of a storm. That's what the urgency that she spoke to me about. And the only money that, that she discussed with me was, was money that they have currently saved in their budget somewhere that they could use to help with the road. And I, I, I believe that's where they're trying to get all these agencies together to help. Yes, do we need a plan? Did I explain that in the beginning? Uh, yeah, I told them, we're gonna need more. The board is gonna need more from them as to what exactly they're going to do.
Right, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm willing to quote, help the school any way we can and provide a safe alternative for these kids, don't get me wrong. But you keep referring to, the school board has some money to help.
Yes.
Not the money to build the road. Where's the rest of it coming from? I mean, you keep saying the help, the help. Well, the help ain't gonna get it. We gotta, they need to have the money set aside to, to build this road. Well, where's the rest of it coming from when you keep saying help?
Well, I, I was repeating the words that the superintendent stated. But also, if you see in, in my report, I think what they're expecting of any help that's provided by the county and/or forestry from Clint is all in-kind.
Okay, okay, as long as that's-
This ain't the first time this is brought up before us.
Yes.
It's brought up three or four years ago. Remember Howard? And you had, they wanted all that drainage pipe put in the curve and drain the water down towards sixty-five and move it. Remember Carl brought, Carl come before us before this.
Well, I mean-
We, we need a better plan. They, I mean-
I agree.
They just not enough information.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a motion.
Tell them we are, in, in my opinion, we don't mind helping them, but we got to know what we dealing with. And we gonna, we, we just can't jump into something without knowing.
Can't break county's funding. That's what I'm saying.
Commissioner Paris, to answer your question about ongoing maintenance, uh, I suspect, most likely, I mean, wouldn't be unreasonable to, to hear from the school board or expect to hear from them possibly, that we have a road department, they don't.
Well, I mean, I, I don't mind helping, but I'm just, we can't fund all this stuff. These guys got a budget. What if you have another hurricane? They, they gotta have money in their budget to deal with this kind of stuff. And we can't just exhaust all, all our assets to build a road when these, this, we didn't approve that in our budget. I mean, we've not allocated extra money to build a road for the school board and all this, and they can't delete their budgets to perform all these duties. I wanna know what we doing and how much money it's gonna cost us, aside from in-kind labor. And we need to have an agreement, not just sit up here and say, yeah, we'll do it. I mean, that don't make no sense. We need to know what we're doing and what we're obligating ourselves to. I am glad to hear that the state's gonna run their own equipment, because I didn't wanna be responsible for... You know, they send you a piece of equipment, next thing you, the motor blows up. Now, we responsible for replacing, you know what I'm saying? I don't wanna be running the state's equipment, but we, I don't know what shape this equipment's in or what it might be when it gets through. They got a lot more money we got. They're fixing stuff and all that. I mean, we need to have a, a MOU, I guess, or something. Well, we know what we doing, we know what they doing. They're providing funds and we gonna help when we can. I don't know how that's gonna play out when you're trying to build a road and these guys are busy for two weeks and they can't go. But next week, we can give a day, you know, how's all this stuff work? I'm willing to help, don't get me wrong. This has been an ongoing issue, but without knowing what we doing...
We need to see their plan and look at it.
To lay the road out.
Well, I don't know if it's been engineered or anything.
None of it's been surveyed, though.
Surveyed, engineered, what needs to be done, how many pipes, how many cross drains you need? Where's all that coming from?
There's three cross drains, which is gonna take probably forty-eight inch pipe, probably, I wanna say probably sixty foot. And I think on material, I think we figured out it's gonna be like a, I don't know, a hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of line rock to put on that road, which will be twenty foot wide. So, and that's, they, they supposed to fund, I thought they wanted forty.
They told me they wanted forty.
Forty foot wide?
Yes.
It's a forty foot.
Now, they wanted forty.
Okay, forty foot wide, six inches thick of line rock, I think. I wanna say at one point eight miles.
What I was saying a while ago, though, are you gonna dig ditches and throw that dirt up into the middle of the road and try to elevate the road a little bit and prevent the flooding and all?
There's a little bit that may flood, maybe about three tenths of a mile and the rest of it is sand ridge, so.
I mean, I don't know, you know more about it.
I mean, that's, the school, we just, and I thought somebody was supposed to have been here to-
Yeah, but if the road gets washed out, they gonna want us to come back and fix it. So, I mean, you need to build, if you're gonna build a road or, or help build a road, it need to be built right to start with.
They didn't say nothing about lifetime maintain, I mean, I don't know about a way.
Well, if kids can't, it's school buses and the kids can't use it, it ain't worth crap.
And let me ask another question. Uh, Clint, they said that Clint would try, that he would work out with forestry to straighten out some of the curves. Has that been worked out yet or do you guys know?
Nobody started on that one yet.
It's probably going around a wet gun or something, eh?
That's just, yeah, going around a wet line.
Now, wait a minute.
Do the school have a...
Mr. Chairman.
Do the school have a engineer?
I have no idea what assets the school has.
Do they hire any?
Got a school board member right there, though. He might know.
Do y'all have a engineer firm, hire?
We got one back there in the back.
Two of them, one over there and one over there?
Well, here, I wanna address something that Mr. Howard just said. You got a, an easement from the state of Florida with a legal description attached to it. The state forestry department can't deviate around whatever easement's been granted. We have to stick with that easement. If it's not right, then they have to go back to the school or to the board of trustees and get it changed. We can't just meander off of that easement into their property.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman.
That's the reason it has to be surveyed and marked.
He, uh, he go.
I'll go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
The other side is, is I don't see the school board here. Uh, I think that was just mentioned. And, uh, I think they should be here partnering. I see, I, I wanna compliment our department heads for facilitating and talking about this and bringing this subject up. And, uh, potentially, I, I mean, I do have a motion on the floor that we develop a plan of care and a, a directive suggested by our attorney. I think that's a minimal situation. And I'd like to have comments on that.
Can I ask a clarification? So, with the motion, you're asking that we develop the plan or, or Attorney Shula asked the school board to develop the plan?
Well, that's a thought. Either way, what do you- My only plan is I'm going to, i- if the board follows through on this motion, my, my question to the school board, of course, I'd have to go through their attorney. I can't call them, is we've been, we've received apparently a request to assist building a road as a, I guess, an emergency escape route for the school. Please send us the plan that you want us to consider, because we don't have a, we have an access easement. We don't have any engineered drawings of who's responsible for the permitting, what's the cost estimate.
Okay.
Things of that nature. I mean, they need to- And I'd go with all that.
Okay.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke.
I'll second that, what, per what the attorney just said.
Yep.
Also have some discussion please, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I think one, another thing that's missing on this map, Attorney Shula.
Yes.
Is we don't know where the boundary lines for state property there, what the school board owns, because they own forty acres there somewhere. Uh, we don't know where none of that's at. Where it's joining up there, that pre-existing road is a state road. So, is that the one that they're, uh, have turned over to the school board from where, where it's gonna potentially join? Coming back toward sixty-five, is, is that all gonna be property of the school board? Or are they just talking about, you know what I mean? Those are some other situations that need to be clarified from them. Well, that whole stretch right there, where the existing road is?
Yes.
Is a state road already? It goes through state forestry.
County forestry road.
You know what I mean, it's, it's-
And that's, yeah, that's what they turn over to the county, what you see in orange, right? That's the road. That's what they-
Then, then they're gonna look to maintain, and I'm just saying what I think.
Yeah.
They're gonna look to maintain the bottom end. They're gonna look for us to maintain the top end if it's our road. If, if it's different, we need to know that. That's why I think that's some of what Commissioner Paris was trying to quantify a while ago, too.
Yes, so they're, they've prepared a legal description for a deed. I, I would suspect that there is a, uh, survey drawing that goes along with that. And I, I can ask for a copy of that.
Well, how they, I keep on, they keep on saying they turned over something to the county.
That's what he keep saying.
They keep saying that, but that's not accurate.
Give it to the, to the school board.
And give it to the school board, not the county, two different instances.
They want, they say county right away, so.
School board right away.
Exactly, which is county school, I guess.
Corner of DZ Road, the road was donated to the school board, not the county.
Right.
You keep saying the county, but it's not the county.
They want the county to help build the road, so.
But, Mr. Chairman, one more thing for you, uh, call for vote. Are all these issues going to be, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Are all these issues that we brought up here this morning going to be addressed? Uh, you saying you're just gonna ask the school board for a plan, but they need to know our concern. And these concerns need to be addressed in this plan.
Okay.
I mean, if you don't, if you don't convey our concern, the board's concerns to them, then they're not gonna know we have any concern. Just give us a plan and we gonna do it. I want all these concerns and, and issues that we brought up here today, such as the, the LMS projects and all this, we need to know where all that's at and who's gonna be responsible for the maintenance of the roads, the school board road, not a county road. And we cannot deplete these two departments' budgets taking care of a road. And we've already heard that three tenths of a mile of it's gonna go underwater, which is gonna cause continued maintenance. Who's responsible for all that? All the issues that you've heard the board discuss here this morning, I would hope would be addressed.
They will be conveyed.
Sure.
You know-
In the question.
So that we know what we doing.
You know, you, you got to watch the state. They love to give away bad roads. They done gave us that alligator park road. They gave us that alligator park road and we done spent a hundred million dollars on it.
Mr. Chairman.
Now they wanna give us this and this and, the alligator park was paid. This here ain't got, you got to bill it up. You got to do everything to this. I don't know.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
School board, tell them to beware of what they accept.
Mr. Chairman, two things. One, I will address in the request for their plan, the, the items that you've talked about this morning. And then, Commissioner, uh, Jones, to answer your question. I was looking at the copy of the deed I have online and Mr. Maron has provided me with a copy of a survey. And based on what I'm looking at here, the, the access easement that's been given to the school board is that entire area in orange.
Okay.
Now, I haven't, I won't pretend that I've read every word of that twelve-page attachment. It, it probably is a non-exclusive access easement. That doesn't necessarily mean that the state would not, you know, potentially be involved in the maintenance. But those are, again, questions that are unanswered as we sit here this morning.
One, one more question, Attorney Shula, I'd like for you to ask.
Yes, sir.
As far as board's concerns. Because I know it's probably gonna happen. It's not being discussed here today. But there's so many things being done, uh, with the school's safety in the last year.
Yes, sir.
And dollars being spent. I might be assuming, but the school's gonna have somewhere to either, I don't know if they're gonna try to block access to that the road so nobody else can get in, because there's multiple gates on the front side. So, if they do, I would ask that that gate be placed south of where that existing county road is, somewhere. If they wind up putting up some kind of gate or blocking the road or... And again, that's an assumption on my part. They might be planning on doing that.
Would you circle on that for me, please?
I'm talking about around here.
Circle it.
Talking about somewhere, you know, down below it.
That's actually a state road there, right? That's not a county road.
State, yeah.
State road.
But anyway, so I know with school's safety being what it is, I, I would imagine they would be addressing that as well.
I think I could be wrong. I got the impression they're gonna put a gate in this area, come up in a second.
That'd be fine, too.
That's where I remember it being talked about the last time, but not since years ago.
That's where Carl, Carl was trying to get that loop out of that road where the buses can make the turn, you remember?
Yes.
Carl was wanting to get that loop out of the road. When Carl come to us, that's a big loop where he wanted out, tried to go straight across.
It probably goes like a huge drain right there.
And see, we need to sit down. What I see need to be done, I mean, you need an engineer, you need the road. If we gonna get involved, you need the road department, you need, everybody, the school is for educating children and they don't do no, they don't know nothing about the roads and everything. And I guess that's why they asking for our help, in which I'm willing to, for in my book, I'm willing to help, but I, but I got to have more information.
Sure.
I mean, I can't just commit to jump into something I don't know about. Right now, we don't, we blindside, I'm here, I'm blindside, but I don't know what's going on. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass you none.
Thank you.
And then-
That's all I got, really.
Okay, Mr. Howard, keep up the good work.
Thank y'all. Thank you, guys.
Back on the agenda, be Mr. Vanda D.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Vanda. Solid waste.
I just have one item here. It's not on the report, but they come up to me-
The school board.
Late yesterday, uh, our hauler for the, uh, class one, Mr. Richards, which he's in the audience, um, is asking for an increase. And the increase is consist of, uh, overweight. He had to go out and purchase a new trailer. And, uh, his trailer's a lot heavier, which caused our boxes when we pack them, which makes the overall weight higher. So, he's asking for an increase to help cover that extra weight. And I was, I told him I would have to bring that before the board. Don't have all the information. I just, like I said, just got the invoice yesterday and noticed that increase was on the invoice. And I made a call to him and let him know that I would have to bring this before the board and also the attorney. What I'm asking is, uh, just Mr. Shula could look into this a little bit further with me. And let us get back with, uh, Mr. Richards.
Ready to move?
Mr. Chairman, what, what does the original contract call for?
With, uh, we have an unsigned contract.
Unsigned contract? So, you don't have a contract?
Exactly. Yes.
Well, that's the number one thing you need to address.
Okay.
And I don't know what, what the, without a contract, I don't know what, what basis you using. Because you know, you're telling me now, we don't have, I thought we had this settled two years ago or whatever, when Mike started hauling this stuff, but we don't.
We do not have, yes.
When you're, when you're, when you're saying the trailer that he bought is heavier, that's... What we dealing with is the amount of trash going on the trailer, regardless of what the trailer holds. We're paying for the weight of the trash, right?
Yes.
That's, I mean, that's the way it should be.
Right.
Well, I mean, I... It should be a quick fix. I mean, it's, we paying for trash. We not paying for that weight of that trailer, so... Seeing to me, we gonna haul the trash. I mean, we got to, y'all got to work this out. You got to go through enough of shoes and y'all get that part straight. But the bottom line is, from what I'm hearing, he taking more trash. Why he ain't get it?
We can, we can-
I mean, ain't he get, he, he hauling more trash, right?
Uh, yes, it could be more boxes. What we could do where we normally would get, uh, fifteen to seventeen tons in a box. And with this trailer being heavy, that would carry the weight over, so we back off from the fifteen to seventeen ton to maybe twelve or thirteen ton, just throwing a number out there.
Let me ask you a question. What he got a ton, he got a limit on the, when he go across wherever he taking?
Yeah, uh, if I understand right, at one time, it was an eighty thousand pound limit that he could run with. Now, he had to purchase an overweight permit, which is eighty-eight thousand. Yeah, eighty-eight thousand.
Come up to the, hold on, sir.
Yes, sir. My name's Mike Richards.
Let me get your name and stuff for the record.
Okay. I'm Mike Richards with Richards Freight.
Okay, now, now, what, what going on? Let, let, let me know. Let us know, so.
What happened was roughly about-
If, if I could, uh, Mr. Richards. We can do this publicly if that is the will of the board, but, uh, there, there's a-
You wanna do it.
There, there's, I would rather, just because it's cleaner, we're, the, the bill's gonna be paid essentially under protest today because there's too much confusion with an unsigned contract and the weight versus overweight. And my recommendation is that, that basically y'all direct me, as Mr. Fama has, uh, requested, to work with him and Mr. Richards. There's gotta be a solution. And then we'll bring it back to the board. We need to put it on the agenda, then it will be properly agendaed and then there'll be a proper time. and then there'll be a proper time and place to talk about it.
Okay.
But right now, this is an off-agenda item, and under your current public comment policy, this is something that, that should not be brought up and discussed today. It should be placed on a future agenda to be consistent with your public comment policy. So that is my recommendation to you. Just, as I said, take Mr. Fonda's advice, refer the matter to myself and Mr. Davis, and we will work with Mr. Richards, and we'll come back to you at the next meeting with something for your consideration.
Okay, y'all get, y'all get together, get together with them, y'all.
That'll be fine.
Get back with them.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
Thank you.
Yes. Do we get, do we get a motion and vote on...
Oh, we ain't voted yet.
There ain't been a motion?
I'm not sure there's even been a motion yet.
I make a motion, turn it over to Mr. Shuler and Fonda.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor. Mr. Masters, Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Attorney Shuler?
Yes, sir.
Per your comments a minute ago, you said that it was, everything was gonna be paid today under protest. Is that gonna continue to be done that way until we get this ironed out, or what, what are we doing?
I'm not sure the frequency in which he submits invoices.
I'm not either, that's why I'm asking the question.
What's that?
He wants to know, are we going to be getting another invoice between now and the next meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's gonna be hell between now and the next meeting.
That was a moment question.
Any more discussion? All in the paper?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes you none.
That's all.
That's it. Anybody got anything for Mr. Davis? Keep up the good work.
Thank y'all.
Next will be Ms. Pam Brunel, great to meet you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
First action item is addressing the after-action report from the Active Shooter 360 LLC and the improvement recommendations list. There's like seventeen of them that I sent to y'all. We have addressed each and every one of them, and our CMP where they recommended. We have contacted, now have HughesNet, so we will have internet, satellite internet. So the next storm, we will have internet. Now, unfortunately, you know, you cut, your general public won't have internet, so don't know how much good that will do them, but we will be able to put things out. We are also took a look at our ham radio situation. We had a lot of antennas down, a lot of broke antennas. We are in the process of re-establishing that backup. We looked at an app like the sheriff has. Unfortunately, it's a little more expensive than our budget can handle. We also are working with our webpages to make them more user-friendly than they have been in the past. Is there any questions that you have for me as far as this after-action report?
Now, what you said is you...
This is your after-action report from the consultant y'all hired, hired to come in and look at our office.
No, I ain't talking about that. What you talking about, the Active Shooter?
That was the company that y'all hired.
That's the name of the company. Your director appears to go out, and after, after the storm, you had that company that came up there.
Yeah, I know, this, this, where the people, that's why I was getting confused.
That's the name of the company, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of questions.
Yeah, I know the, I know we had told the people, we had gave you, to do that because the people were gonna, had to ask some questions. Go ahead.
Oh, one question, in reading, reading your responses to the report, is the need for volunteers?
Uh, yes, sir.
And a lot of different ESF functions. I, I would like to make, and I'll put this in form of a motion that you advertise in the local paper, letting the general public know we need volunteers in some of these areas, especially the business community. And then there are some other responses within your report that we need to proceed with, and one of those is about the lack of department heads, county's personnel being present at the EOC, and a lot of these, a lot of the county employees, like in the courthouse and all, all, a lot of them are females, they have young children look after during these events, and so there's a lot of different stuff within. I, I appreciate your responses on every one of these items, but a lot of these things need to be worked on, but on the volunteer side, that needs to be advertised in the paper and let the business community know we need volunteers, and, and some people need to come out and volunteer to help improve things, and that's just in some of these categories. And there was another issue here with the ESF-15. You know, we use community action in that capacity at this time. It looks like you've got some positive response from the sheriff's department as far as better cooperation.
Yes, sir.
That's all I wanna say on that.
Mm-hmm.
So I've read the report, and I'm sure the other commissioners have, too. But I'd like to see the, the stuff advertised in the paper, so it not only gets out on the TV here this morning or alert Franklin, it gets out to the general public, so I think we need to advertise that. And I'm gonna make that a motion to have those, those needs, whatever you need as far as volunteers in here, so when you do your advertising, make sure they know if it's ESF-5 or 15, wherever we need these volunteers, and make them aware of where we need volunteers and how many. And I'm gonna put that in form of a motion.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, and second by Commissioner Jones. Discussion. I got some. Now, you can get all the volunteers you want. When you get a major storm, them people gonna leave you.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely right. You cannot make them stay. You're absolutely right.
And, and, you know, people stay during a minor storm. And you not, I wouldn't ask no volunteers to stay. If something like Mike are coming, they'll be a fool to stay.
They stayed, Commissioner, along with us. I gave them the option, but they stayed.
But I wouldn't have. I'm just telling you, I'm gonna get on down the road. But that's why I was saying, y'all might get mad with me. But that's why you got, over all these other counties, you got the sheriff's department over. I'm not trying to take a job from you and them other three people, the other two people. But you still need a sheriff's department there with boots on the, they already got boots on the ground, they gonna be here. He gonna leave people here. And I think they should be with y'all working, keeping y'all job. But I still think that they would be the ones who would be your most help, because he gonna have somebody in each part of this, this county. You gonna have someone on the east side, the west side, north or the south. And he gonna be in a setup, he gonna, because they got to, they got to protect Caribou, they got to protect Alligator Point, they got to protect East Point, and they got to protect that end. And he gonna have some deputies that's on duty. And they gonna, that, that'll be, that's why, you ain't got about two or three, maybe a couple of counties without the sheriff's department having them there.
Commissioner?
Hmm?
Uh, not being disrespectful to you, there's seven in the state of Florida. That is under the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Leon County just took theirs back from their sheriff's office.
Well, maybe they did. But I still say, that'll be more help for y'all. That's what I said. Okay, any more discussion?
Just one more thing. Pam, did you consider, when you're putting up your new website, that it be ADA-compatible, based on the recent lawsuits we've complied with?
Yes, sir, we did. We're working with the county's software to make sure that it's compliant with that.
That's good. Thank you.
Uh, second item is reimbursement.
Well, we got, we got...
Sorry.
All in the paper?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes you none.
Uh, second item is reimbursement and mitigation on FEMA PA projects. If you look at obligated and what's been paid out, the federal government has paid us two hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cent. The state's paid out twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-three cent. Now, we are waiting on mitigation projects. They keep changing our program manager on us. The last one we had, we, we told him three times we needed mitigation inspections on these. I do believe, Jennifer, can you answer this, when they're coming this week?
They'll be here, actually tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. We'll have mitigation here, the new PBMG will be here, and the PBMG's boss, the TFL, all should be here tomorrow at 10:00 a.m.
So hopefully, we can start moving forward with our mitigation projects. They have to agree that, yes, this project needs mitigation, and then we come up with a mitigation solution, which we've already been working with, um, Dewberry on some of these mitigation projects, to be able to go ahead and have that upfront ready for them. We have several projects that we are waiting on information for. The health department building and WAMs, and then we're donating resources, and then both our CAT fees. It's a nightmare going through the paperwork and matching up timesheets to the 213, which is the FEMA worksheet, where the employee tells me actually what he did, where he was at, and what he used. Sometimes they don't match up, so we're slowly trying to get through that. Again, we're just a staff of three, and it, it's consuming us.
Commissioners, we're not leaving this subject, I'm just gonna add to it. Go to Allen's report. Item number three. And I'll say this to begin with, item one, two, and three, I have to read while Pam is here, I'm going to read while Pam is here, but this specifically addresses item number three. So on Wednesday, September 18th, Ms. Sierra Anderson, at eight to Senator Scott, if you remember, she was here a few, she was here a few meetings ago, called the county office seeking information on where the county stands on Hurricane Michael reimbursement. I asked Allen to talk to Ms. Anderson about Alligator Drive, and they had a lengthy conversation with her regarding the two projects versus one project that the FEMA regional office in Atlanta is wrestling with, and I'm assuming he meant Hermine versus Michael, is what I'm thinking. To continue, the conversation went, then went onto how the county was doing in getting FEMA reimbursements. As the board is aware, the sheriff's office has received its $220,000 of Category B reimbursement from FEMA. So Allen told Ms. Anderson, he knew the money was flowing. He asked her how other counties were doing, and made the observation that it appeared that those counties and cities who had consultants helping navigate the FEMA process were faster in getting their funds. She agreed. At this time, Ms. Brunel and Ms. Daniels have successfully recouped some 316,000 of FEMA funds for Franklin County, correct me if that number's wrong. These funds include the county's costs in debris removal, as well as some other costs. But the county still has at least $100,000 outstanding in overtime and other expenses that have not yet been reimbursed. He looked at the log sheets. Ms. Brunel and Ms. Daniels have to convert into FEMA format, and the effort is significant, like she just stated. Now that Ms. Brunel has a consultant, the management experts approved by the board, Allen is wondering whether it would be possible to amend their contract and have that consultant assist Ms. Brunel's office in completing the FEMA reimbursement process. You're, back to you, Pam.
Can they do that? Can, can they help you?
Yes, sir, but I mean, that has to be okay by, I mean, the, the contract has to be amended by y'all. Y'all have to approve that first.
Well, what they want, they gonna want some extra money?
They will. Yes, sir, they'll be paid, they'll be paid an hourly wage.
And that's a good point.
That was in their contract.
No, I mean, I thought we had all hired them, and they, they were under that.
No, sir. Y'all told me there was to be no recovery in that contract, in, in that RFP, and that we took it all out. Now, their contract is to help us with contractual services, like helping us with our LMS, looking for grants. If something were to happen that we needed extra staff at the EOC during an activation, they, they would be authorized to do that. But again, they gave us a hourly rate for those things, which that hourly rate would apply to them helping us, which would also be eligible for reimbursement under our direct administrative cost that we get for our overall disaster of Michael.
Do you know the hourly rate?
No, sir, I have to go back and look at their, look at their contract. But I do know they were the lowest out of all the applications that we got.
Is they a good company, are they a reputable company?
Yes, sir, they've worked for us before.
Do you need them to help you?
Uh, yes, sir. We're, I mean, but again, that's up to y'all. I mean, we was instructed to take it out, so it's up to y'all to say you wanted to amend it, and...
Go ahead.
I, I'd like to make a motion that Ms. Pam get with the attorney and see what the cost would be to hire these, this consultant that is currently under contract to help, to assist her in collecting this money, and exactly how we would pay for that, and come back to us at the next meeting with that information so we can make a determination. What you got?
Yes, Mr. D, I just wanted to reiterate that it, it would be something good to do because we do need that money to come back. So that, that's something that's definitely in the best interest. If, if it can speed up the process with FEMA, it's a, it's definitely worthwhile doing.
Well, I think she was stating that their, their cost could be reimbursed, is that what you were saying?
Yes, sir. Out of your management, uh, direct, excuse me, direct administrative cost. And that is, we get a percentage of our overall dollar amount for our disaster that's coming to the county.
But us hiring this consultant to help you at this, at this stage and this late point, is that still applicable?
Yes, sir. That, that money comes to this county regardless whether we hire a consultant or not. If we keep trudging along, then the county gets that direct administrative cost.
So my motion would include you getting with the management experts, and getting with Attorney Shuler, and coming back to us with the correct information at the next meeting, whether we can put them on this to help you do that.
Yes, sir.
Again, we need to know what we're doing before we do it. And that, that'll be my motion.
Sure.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Masters. Discussion. And while y'all out there, make sure you act for all of, I don't know how much money are left out there, but if we decide to go this route, I like where you act for all of it, get help for all of it, and to try to bring it all in, if, you know. If we can. Any more discussion? All in the paper?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. That's it.
Anything else, sir? Because I got, oh, I got quite a few.
You need them?
Oh, you got a few. You know, Allen is a wordy guy, so you know how that goes. So, okay, so I'm gonna work backwards, actually, Commissioner. So let's go to item number two on Allen's report, which is about the LMS. At the end of the last meeting, Commissioner Perry asked Allen about the process for getting LMS projects funded. And Pam and Allen talked earlier in the meeting, had a discussion about the possibility for the use of recently announced $5 million of Hurricane Michael mitigation fund. As the board may recall, Allen told the board that it was possible for some of the lot acquisitions in Alligator Point, that FCMC has assisted the county in writing a grant would need some of the $5 million as a local match. Allen said there was a 25% local match for any LMS project, and while the state had implied that they would assist in the match, he was not sure if it would involve all of the lots. Seeking clarification from FCMC on what the state will match so that the county does not overcommit the LMS funds. Commissioner Paris asked me to contact Ms. Brunel to get a further understanding of how she intended to proceed with submitting LMS projects for the county. Allen ended up talking to Pam before I did first because of the item above. So in their conversation with her, he, they talked about the LMS. Pam is aware that every LMS project has a local match of twenty-five percent. She's also aware that if she recommends an LMS project for the county to do that she will bring the project back to the board for approval. However, other entities such as the school board and the cities have projects on LMS. And if one of these entities wants to apply for an LMS project, it will be up to that entity to provide the match and to complete the application. Uh, Allen wanted to know if Pam had any more comments, but I think you kind of summed it up with the school board road earlier. But if you do, anything else?
No.
Ms. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
The reason I brought this up, Pam, I know my name's mentioned in these paragraphs a couple of different times, was if we proceed with doing the LMS project, I'd like to know where the funding's coming from for the match. Whatever project it is, whether it's in the cities, the school board, or the county, we need to know, make sure before we do an LMS project that we have a match for and funds dedicated for that.
That's why when we start our application, we sit down and figure out and get where they're, where we're gonna, how we're gonna match it, whether it's in kind or have, or like we've done in the past.
Okay.
Uh, and then I bring the projects to you before I ever submit them for y'all to approve us going forward with submitting that application.
And the first question's gonna be, where we gonna get the match?
Yes, we will have that answer before we come to you with how we're gonna find it.
And that's the reason I asked those questions and directed Mike and Allen to get with you and make sure we all knew what we were doing, we're all on the same page. If you apply for something, we definitely gotta have a match for it, and where is that money coming from? That was my main concern.
I have to have y'all's approval before I'm submitting, so.
I know there's a lot of projects out there, but everybody that submitted a project needs to know that we gotta have money to match too.
Yes, sir.
That was my point on that.
Okay, let's go tackle item number one. Attorney Schuler, don't laugh, I'm trying to get in Allen's mind on this one, this is a long one, so, yeah. All right, update on Hurricane Michael State Recovery Grant Application. As the board is aware, the last meeting, Allen recommended the board contract with Langton Consultants for seventy-five hundred dollars to make two applications to the Hurricane Michael State Recovery Program. The deadline for application was October one. So the last meeting was the one and only time the board would hear about the program and make a decision on whether to apply. That has changed, but we'll get to that in a second. At the time of his recommendation, Allen knew that there was a requirement that a project had to be a minimum, had to ask for a minimum of a million. That has also changed. So I recommend the board, he recommended the board seek a million dollars improvements to the EOC, so we talked about that, and a million for county-wide dune restoration. What he wasn't aware of, until after the board meeting, that a project needed to be completed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty. That has not changed. I was, he was also not aware that the Department of Emergency Management had been awarded a separate one point eight million to be directed to nine counties that need new or updated EOCs, and Franklin County was one of those counties. Ms. Brunel, your director, your EM director, became aware of the DEM funds after the meeting, when she called around to other county EM directors to find out what they knew about the Hurricane Michael State Recovery Program. It turns out that emergency management directors she contacted were unaware of the Hurricane Michael State Program because DMN, DEM, I'm sorry, had not notified your directors of the program. But some of the EM directors knew about the one point eight million of FDM funds. To be clear, I'm talking about two separate funding, both controlled by the EM. Ms. Brunel knows more than I do, me and Allen, but FDM funds can be used for the design and creation of construction plans for new EOCs or for renovations to existing facilities. With nine counties eligible, it appears that Franklin County should request at least two hundred thousand dollars from this one point eight million dollar DEM fund for a new or renovated EOC facility to meet the needs of the county. Allen made this comment on the one point eight million funds because it directly relates to his revised assessment of the Hurricane Michael State Recovery Grant Program. His revised, his revised assessment is that it is not likely that Franklin, that, that Franklin County would receive any funds from the Hurricane Michael Grant Program to make a renovation to our existing EOC when the EM is prepared to allocate funds to Franklin County from their one point eight million dollars allocation. The EM is in control of both programs, so they have control of how both parts of money will be spent. He also recommended the board request one million for dune restoration out of that hurricane, those Hurricane Michael funds. I now know, Allen now knows no longer that they recommend, no longer make that recommendation for, for the following reasons. One, he has to design and complete a project by June thirtieth, twenty twenty. We don't have any idea of what a good dune restoration program will include because he have not yet done the study. So he's gonna drop back and just request several miles of sand fencing because he thought we could install sand fencing with inmate labor and at least get some improvements done before June thirtieth, twenty twenty. The problem with that right there is that the project has to involve a minimum of one million. And if we're gonna buy sand fencing, we don't need a million dollars' worth of sand fencing. So with a timeline to get the project completed by June thirtieth, and with the requirement that it at least be a million, it became apparent to me that it was not worth spending seventy-five hundred dollars of county funds on applications that were most likely not going to be funded. Consequently, he did not complete the assignment to Langton Consulting, and they did not turn in any applications. The ultimate conclusion, from the way DEM announced the funds and that limitations that they put on the funds, is that this program is really intended to help those counties that lost revenue because of Hurricane Michael, such as Bay County, who's borrowed something like two hundred and fifty million to deal with Hurricane Michael recovery. Before he reached his conclusions, he conferred with representatives from Gulf County who had come to the same conclusion. He also consulted with Mike Langton, and he agrees with Allen's conclusion. Now, yesterday, just to add to it, I got another email from Mike Langton, and he said that Hurricane Michael, the State Recovery Grant, the twenty-five million, they made two changes this week, effective this week. One, they extended the deadline until October eighth, which is Friday? No, next week, Monday, probably. And they lowered the minimum ask from one million to five hundred thousand dollars. So Mike now wants to know, does that change anything in our way of thought or process? I don't know, I will, I'm throwing this out to you guys. Do we buy five hundred thousand dollars' worth of sand fencing?
Can't buy no sand? Can't buy sand?
I'll ask.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Michael, on this sand discussion?
Yes, sir.
There have been, and I think it's actually gonna go to the legislature this year. There have been some discussions, and they were talking about it at FACT Legislative Policy Committee last week when I was there. There is an alternative to what we refer to as sand. It's about ten times cheaper, more environmentally friendly, and it's supposed to go before the legislature this year to approve counties being able to use it.
And DAP and the Corps are...
If it's going to the legislature, it must have some kind of improvement.
Okay.
These are things that are coming up now, they, they don't start their session till January. But FACT was going on the record as being supportive of the idea. That was one of our legislative policies.
Okay.
Issues we took out.
I'll ask.
Just so you know. So it might be a combination of whatever this material is, plus sand fencing.
Yes, we had to have this application turned in by October eighth.
Yes, sir.
That's true.
I mean, I don't see how we're gonna come up with a project by October eighth.
I don't think so. I mean, Langton would do the application, of course, at the cost, seven thousand five hundred for you, but the, I guess our thinking is, Commissioner, is it worth it? I mean, we would have to be realistic and say, do we wanna pay that for application? Well, we probably won't get funded because I don't see the state saying, Franklin County, I'm not gonna fund you here and fund you here for EOC. That's not gonna happen, you know? And so that's, that's what we have to really think about and consider. And I'll, I'll talk to Mike today, you know, when we get through here. Wanted to get your feelings first before I talk to Mike about...
I don't know what the cost of sand fencing is, but that, still, that's a lot of money to use on sand fencing.
Yes, sir.
Five hundred thousand dollars, that's gotta be put in the ground by June thirtieth.
Of twenty twenty, yes, sir, of next year, six months, well, not truly six months, I'm sorry, a little longer than that, but, a lot longer than that, but, yeah.
Mr. Chairman? The only other thing I would say is we definitely need to chase that down because we had a lot of dunes gone after the last storm.
Mm-hmm.
Not just in District One, but over Alligator Point. There are a lot of dunes gone. We have another storm, there are gonna be businesses that can't build back if they get destroyed where they're at now.
Okay.
A lot of homes on Saint George Island are gonna get wiped away.
We do need to chase this down and see if it's worth it.
I will.
But sand fencing might take a little while, but it does work.
Okay, and I'll go into Chairman's recommendation about purchasing sand outright, see what, what they say.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's it? That's my marching orders for this? Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. One more. This is an Allen report, let's go, I hate to skip back and forth, let's go to my report. I have one with Pam, little name right here next to real Pam, where are you? No, that's Kate. Oh, where am I, Pam? I thought I had one here with you. So, okay, yes, item number two. Uh, so I received an email from Chris Kingry, Representative Shoals' Executive Secretary, requesting a list of the most important needs for the county in regards to Hurricane Michael recovery. There we go again. Representative Shoals' office would like the items ranked with a dollar amount as possible, then submitted to their office no later than October eighth. Seems to be a popular date. In conferring with Mr. Pierce, we both agree, here we go, Chairman Lockley, the board should consider a request for the state to take back ownership of Alligator Drive as its number one priority.
Absolutely.
I agree to that.
Yeah.
Ms. Brunel may have some other suggestions for the board. What do you think, Pam?
Take it back.
Well, I mean, no, besides that, we could ask that, I think they made that obvious this morning. Is there anything else you'd like me to ask the board to consider to put on this list to Representative Shoals?
Um... The only thing is, this has to do with Hurricane Michael, is we're getting roughly two hundred thousand dollars for planning and design for our EOC. After speaking with the state, they told me once we did those designs that the board would need to, um, present it to legislation asking for that amount of money to build our EOC. So this may be something you wanna look at because it's very inadequate when you have that many people in there trying to work, work an event.
So you're asking for construction money too?
Yes.
Okay.
But until you do design, you don't know how much construction money you need.
True. But we'll...
So you can't get that in to him by the eighth?
No.
That's next Monday?
Yeah, but I'll put a, I'll just put a statement in there that, you know, we'll be seeking construction money once we get the design completed, if, if the board is okay with that.
Mr. Chairman? And, okay, Michael, I have another suggestion as a source of funding relative to the Hurricane Michael issue.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I wrote this out, as a funding priority, I'd like the state to consider placing guardrails or cabling rails along the hazardous waterside sections of Highway ninety-eight between Carabelle and East Point. I think when we see the compromise of the, of the waterside shoulder in that area, and we also see an example of what I'd like to propose, you know, that Chloe's Law, that they built the cable railing along the stretch of road that goes from Appalachia Cola into East Point right there. I'd like to consider that as a request for funding. It's a safety issue particularly.
So, okay, is that same type of railing, that's on causeway, is what you're talking about?
The spirit of this is something, safety guard railing on that very hazardous section of road. Whatever the style is, doesn't matter.
Okay.
But, uh...
Why do you want to do that?
Because that shoulder is so narrow, waterside, between East Point and Carabelle. And, and, and there's a bunch of riprap there, and it's very hazardous. Oh, and, and...
We're gonna block off our cast net, I mean fishermen that pulls off side, ain't nobody gonna get there and go fish down on side of the road.
Also, you have to take into consideration that the young man that was from ARPC is coming here and them are doing those living shorelines in there.
Yeah, I knew that.
If you put this cabling all up in there, you gonna make it where they can't get out there to do the, the living shorelines in those areas. So that needs to be taken into consideration. I agree with you, Commissioner Bolt, but as a gentleman come here, it was the last month, last month and a half with ARPC, and they want to do the living shoreline. So we need to be careful about guardrails and cabling.
Okay.
Until they complete those projects.
Or can we qualify and say we have access points along the, to accommodate both of these ideas?
I wanna add, Mr. Chairman, to what Commissioner Paris is saying, being that I'm your representative of ARPC Board, I'm also on the executive board by the ARPC, they voted me in in January. The, I don't wanna let the cat out of the bag, but not only have they been able to secure funding for the design of this living shoreline project that covers some eight miles, but we're supposed to be giving an update to the whole board in November that they think they found grant funds to secure the building of this living shoreline to the tune of fourteen million dollars. So this is something that's very real, it's something that's gonna happen. I understand, Commissioner Bolt, what you're saying about the cabling, but I can just tell you, for me personally, I think the cabling has not been the best solution. Uh, we're, we're currently presented with a problem on the two fields between the Appalachia to East Point Bridge with growth that you can't maintain because it's hard to get around the cables to cut it.
I noticed that.
It's been a nightmare. So, yes, something might need to be addressed, but it is the hope of this commission that if we can get this living shoreline project, it's gonna help stabilize that road, that'll give us the ability in the future to ask the state to repave that road, then maybe they could look at what you're suggesting at that point in time.
Okay, good point. That's good news for that part.
So I won't ask on this one, how about I put you in touch with a gentleman from ARPC, Commissioner, so that you all can have a very good conversation? And y'all, you could talk about safety, and maybe you come up with something we present at a later date, is that okay?
That'd be, that'd be fine, thank you.
Just one more thing, Commissioners. Uh, you're talking about safety and wanting those rails. Look what happened with Michael. Anytime you start moving your dirt and putting stuff in along your shoreline, that's going to deteriorate. It loosens it and it deteriorates when you get a storm in. We all seen that with that cable. I mean, they went in there, dug it up, put stuff down, run pavement on top of it, it didn't hold. So anytime we compromise what we already have as a shoreline, that is our defense from eroding our road, it's, it doesn't end well for us.
Thank you.
That's all I have for Pam.
I take that.